Good evening, everyone. Dune is not with us this evening, so I will do my best to conduct meeting. This is a special select board meeting which has been posted in three places, plus on our website, and interested parties have been notified. So I believe that we have a legal meeting ready to go. In case we do have a large turnout, I am asking for everyone to keep doing. If we had any questions, we could ask you for more. But the first thing I take this special meeting opportunity to move along. And the first one is from the shelter team, and they are requesting to use the park from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. one Friday, once per month, is what I understand. They would like to have two volunteers in a table to distribute info and answer questions about emergency preparedness. I know that they also participate in the harvest fair, and they do
You said it's going to be one Friday per month. Do you have the date of the
Per month, and perhaps Julie could have that information. This was distributed by Jan McCann.
Okay.
And her phone number is 767-3667.
Okay, I can give her a call. Thank you very much.
Sure. I move that we approve this application.
I second it.
All in favor?
Alright.
Eyes have it. Do we sign this here?
Yeah.
The next item on our agenda is, well, it's also an application for use of this time it's the Riverside Park, which is the one down below. Use of the Riverside Park to begin and end the Pierce Hall Ridgeline Outdoor Collective 5K Dash. It entails a registration table, two banners, parking which would not take place in front of the firehouse, and small ceremony after the race for prizes and recognition. This is an annual event. It is taking place on July 4th. I don't know if there's a rain date, but I would assume that running probably would happen in the rain, so I'm not sure that there is a rain day. Best of luck to all that Therefore, unless anyone has anything else to add, I move to approve this application for use of the Riverside Town Park.
I second that.
All in favor?
Alright.
So hop in town. Okay, um, next on our agenda is, we had a discussion in our last meeting about pickleball at the local tennis courts, but it had not been put on our agenda, so we decided that we were not really able to make a decision because it hadn't been duly warned. So in this particular meeting, we are prepared to make a decision about that. Did you have anything to add to that, Norm?
Not in particular. I think we've covered it in that first meeting.
Okay, and you are going to be doing the lines yourself?
Yeah, and a partner.
Well, that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, we won't be hiring a
Professional line, pickleball line painter? It's a job title. Um, so I guess we'll just go through the formality. If anybody has any questions about it, we're retrofitting we're retrofitting the tennis court so that they can, there'll still be tennis courts, but they will also be accommodating to pickleball, and I believe it's only one of the two courts.
Just one.
Yep, just one of the two courts, so the lines won't be too if the lines are too confusing on one, you could go to the other if you're playing tennis. And I think that's it. I move that we approve the adjustment of lines to one of the tennis courts to accommodate pickleball.
Second that.
All in favor?
Right.
Hi. And we do have a couple pickleball paddles and balls at the hardware store, too. Next on our list is part, yeah, we already did that, discussion of use of funds. Okay, so welcome to all in attendance this evening to bring forward public ideas, thoughts, and suggestions to the select board representatives as to how best to allocate granted funds to Rochester from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. It is the select presidents as possible with the longest investment benefit. You are, we are here to listen to your input as to how these funds could be spent. The select board ultimately will be making the decision as to the best use of the funds, and we have defined some expenses already spent or earmarked for these funds to be utilized. So let me give everyone a rundown of where we stand on the accounting of this. We received $162,615.76 to date. We will receive that same amount in the future. So the total amount granted will be $325,200 have spent money for the fire department having a replacement air compressor, which was shopped around very, very well and got a good deal of $15,750. We improved a section of sidewalk from the hardware to the old firehouse, and that has been completed, and that was at the cost of $26,600. That was a total redo of the sidewalk right down to the base. We purchased Mr. Owl. He cost $963.56 for a total spent to date of $43,313.56. That leaves a balance of funds available to spend of $281,919. We do have a couple other small projects in mind that are in the pipeline. We do have an oil tank, an underground oil tank with this building, the town office, and we are in the works to raise that as the state frowns on underground oil tanks nowadays. We have installed a generator here at the town office with grant funds for emergency use, and the grant didn't quite cover all of it, so there's maybe a couple $3,000 short on that that we may use the ARPA funds to bridge. Other than that, we're all ears now.
Well, we do have one other thing, Pat. We did put out the lead bid for the rest of the sidewalk before the paving starts in the village, and that'll encompass a piece in front of Sandy's Books and Bakery. There will be some added curbing there, and we will be digging across in front of the skip mark to the town park road there, to the Bethel Mountain Road, and then down in front of the park house. We're going to do 100 feet there back to the telephone pole by the sidewalk so that when they come through to pave the village this, well, late summer, early fall, they'll pave right up to that new sidewalk. So in all, in front of the park will be new pavement, and also in front of the library up to the lawn there, they'll make a course, and I'm trying to get them to do in front of the hardware, so that's all one piece back from the curbing there. Not sure how, if we'll have any luck there, but
I see, Martha.
So that's what we're planning on. We just put that out to bid. We don't know what the price on that's going to be. So, but that is pending.
Excuse me, Frank, a question about that sidewalk work that you just talked about up by the park house and everything. I just wondered if you had, I mean, if you're just putting that out to bid, then you probably don't have any idea of the date that that work might be done, general date.
We put a blanket on that of August 10th, but it's going to be depending on the state as far as when the paving starts. We have no idea. I've tried to get a date from them. They don't really know because it's all Pike-related who's doing the paving. So they may start north, they may start south. There's no nobody knows how they're going to do it or when they're going to do it. So we gave an we gave an end date on that of August 10th, I believe.
I was just wondering, simply because of 4th of July, we have all those events happening right there but in front of the park house and the park and Pierce Hall and everything on Monday, the 4th of July.
Can't guarantee anything, Martha.
Okay, well, I'll just hope
They wouldn't be working on that date anyway, so.
If it's dug up, we'll just have to sit in the street.
Yep, we'll have to do what they have to do, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any other resource funding for the
Resource funding wasn't let out on any kind of paving projects at all until like last fall.
The sidewalks.
Right, and it takes almost a year to get it, and we don't have that time element to do anything with it. And that's the issue.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is if there are other resources to do it, you're using possibly the ARPA funds as a bridge, and that may get returned. Oh, if you researched it.
No, there's no way you can get that that way with ARPA funds. You either spend it or you lose it. That's it on that. So with ARPA funds, the only reason why we're doing it is because of the paving issue.
Right. I understand you're using, it's seizing the moment.
Right.
But I just wondered if anyone was doing any research for the funding originally.
No, we didn't because we didn't have any timeframe on when the paving was going to be. They couldn't give us any idea when they were going to start the job until the spring.
Alright.
And then they were, they were two months, they said they weren't even going to get to the village until June. So they were a month ahead of schedule on that, so we don't really know.
You're then utilizing the ARPA funds for the sidewalk.
Some of them, yeah.
There is grant money out there every year for bike paths/sidewalks. It does come around every year. It's very limited funds, very competitive. So the chances of getting that are probably rather slim, and it would not cover what we need.
And once you use the ARPA funds for that, it's
There it goes.
Okay.
I understand. There's nothing included from Park House to the Catholic Church, no?
No, we're leaving that section. It's not in bad shape, so we thought later on we would look at that in another plan that we're now currently redoing, that we need to like put in some monies towards upgrading sidewalks throughout the village as a place in the future to go to. It's not something that's easy to do. I mean, if we pencil in $4,000 or $5,000 a year for maybe an upgrade, we could do a section every year and get it caught back up, and that's really what we're trying to look at. But we're in the process of doing the redoing the capital plan and moving forward with that.
And I just wondered from the Parsonage up to Brooks Street, too, because lots of kids use that.
The Parsonage up, yeah. Yes, that's another section that'll need to be done, and also up Park Row, and you know, across in front of the Huntington House, and that all, it's on the radar, but we can't do it all at once. And the only reason why we're concentrating on this part is because when they come through and pave, they will pave right up to that, and it'll look a lot better and be seamless, which is what we're looking for. I mean, it'll enhance the village that way, and that's what we felt was a good use of the funds.
Anybody else have more suggestions? I have some that are in writing. Go ahead.
As far as alternate
Absolutely.
The rec department got together yesterday, and we officially voted on going forth with improving skate space and looking for funds in any way we can. We are addressing, along with ARPA, other avenues of funding. We haven't gotten that part. We have talked with Cricket, an engineer who has given us drawings about how she, you know, might best tackle this.
Did you guys get a copy of this?
I think you did.
You are on that list of things to do, so.
I just thought we'd show you our progress. Cricket's done a lot of work. Sort of a, well, it's sort of a rebuild of, she can get more into it, but a rebuild of just the existing space. We also have a couple other people, including Tom Mapesker, who is working on getting a possibly a pump track associated with that. It would be down in that little lowland area. At least that's what we're looking at at this point. So it could turn into a bigger project depending on the total funding that we get. This pump track could or could not be associated with the aid space. In other words, it could be looked at as two separate projects or a single project if it's cost-effective and can be
Are you looking for specific dollar figures that I requested?
Not at this time.
Okay. We've done a couple of forays into quoting, and the idea of trying to redo the skate space really has come from the fact that it doesn't hold water anymore, and it's cracked. So the, you know, when I did a survey of it last fall, we found that it's about four, four and a half inches higher on the north end. And so the, when I had Cricket down there, we discussed possibly leaving the drainage system that's already in place, which is down about two and a half feet from the surface that it is, and removing the asphalt layer, seeing what the underlying substrate stuff is, and determining then what we need to do. She's got a, on the side of that, you'll see a kind of a strat, strata of what the material that she's actually requesting. But in trying to get the quotes and the numbers, you know, within reason, we thought just taking the macadam or the asphalt away and going up from there about 10 to 12 inches, and then recreating the four-inch asphalt surface and a berm so it holds. So you're actually raising everything up, going down four to six, or even a little more. I don't know. It depends on construction. But the, we thought that if the surfaces underneath are fine, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't make sense to just remove everything, but just to add to it. And the line is basically where the the warming hut is now, because we've hardwired that for the lights for state space. And so we feel like we can go up about maybe 10, 10 inches. So removing four, going up 10, and creating a better subsurface.
How much is picking your sides?
I would, I would like to see it, at least they, just, you know, almost like it is. It's six and a half now, seven?
I'd like to see it eight inches, then dump water in there, because it's going to move eventually.
Right. Well, that can be
Make the flooding easier.
Yeah. Right, then I can fill, then we can fill it right full, and we can go there.
That's good.
Yeah, settles a little bit, it does something.
Right.
We got it.
Yeah, right. I think it depends on the curbing machine that they have. Right, yeah. Eight inches is fine. It's just, I'd like to, you know, continue with it. As the water just goes away.
Well, skate space is already on our list. So in collecting suggestions, we would have another phase where we select certain projects, and we would then roll up our sleeves and get down to how much does this cost? How much can you raise? And how much do you need? So that said, we, it's already on our list from our previous meetings. So you're already kind of there.
The question is, how much?
That's a good question.
Well, we don't know.
Because either it's, you know, it's, from my perspective, I think we, Cricket and I just kicked around numbers on the way out of the library last night, and you know, we could be, I think I got a quote of around $25,000 or $30,000 to repave it just as it is. That's just the paving. The excavation could be another number, just like that. Realistically, you know, we're looking at $50,000 to possibly redo it, and with an eight-inch berm. So any, anything towards that helps us fundraise, going to the, going to the town, going to other resources. We've got, you know, $20,000 here, or whatever, but it's basically will kickstart our program, and I'm not sure what the timing is for you guys to decide.
No, we'll be moving along on it. You know, this is not a decision-making forum tonight, but it is opening the door, and you're keeping the door open for sure.
Right. So, so Dean, we have to realize that right now we only have $160,000. So, and we've already spent like 43-plus a little bit. So when we get the other, will be another year. So we don't know what the sidewalk job is going to cost us, and that's kind of what we're waiting for. These other small jobs, the underground fuel tank, and possibly any extra money the fire department needs in setting up their new truck. There's the retaining wall out here that we've looked at, and all that will be pending all that, too. But we won't have money enough to do everything on that. So we're not putting the retaining wall out on this installment. We've decided that we are going to do the underground fuel tank out here, because that's, I think it's going to be somewhere, if there's no contamination, be somewhere in a ballpark of 5,000. I will supplement some building funds for that removal, and some ARPA funds, so I'll kind of split that down to be like 2,500. Whatever extra we owe on the generator, I'll also split that with a building fund. So I'll take some ARPA funds and some building funds for whatever we owe over the grant. And that's the way I'll divide that up, or look at dividing that up with the board approval, of course. But as far as the skate space resurfacing goes, we haven't used any other money other than that, and we're waiting, like I said, for the sidewalk. And when that comes in, then all that other money, anything left over, then we can decide on what to do with it and how best to use it moving forward. That's the way we kind of are having to look at it.
So the timing may be, you know, hanging on your bids.
Right.
Timing bid.
Right. And what the cost is going to be on that. Once we find out the cost and what it is, then we have a better idea of what monies we have on hand, because we really can't spend any more than $160,000. Also on the list is the library, which is going to need some extremely, you know, sensitive work over there. We're not really sure what that's going to entail or what it's going to cost, but it's going to be a little bit more intensive than what we want to get into at that. And that may be with the second installment, where we look at those kinds of things.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is the
For all years.
Yep.
The timing for our fundraising activity. If we had a commitment of something this year, it would, just, you know, hear me out. It would, I think it would really help us in terms of fundraising down the road, that the town is, you know, is committed to this, and this year we can guarantee X amount of money and build on it.
Right.
And it just, it has everything to do with timing, and whether it, you know, moves forward this year, or we just, you know, table everything for next year, and everything, everyone knows that prices go up. So I'm just, I'm kind of pleading for the, some kind of commitment for that, you know, in the near future, so we can get our, get our own movement going.
Those bids for the sidewalk are due by the 27th of June.
Okay.
So then after that, we'll know what that price is, and then we can move forward with that after that. So then you can get an idea of what we might be able to send your way. So that would be at the end of the month.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there anything else you're looking from us for the, you know, upcoming meetings? I presume estimates?
I think that'll probably happen later, I would think, but you may want to gather that up, you know, before, you know, August and get an idea.
I can, we can move ahead with what Cricket has given us on estimates. I can get, you know, I'm willing to do a clerk of the works of the whole project to be there while it's getting done, you know, and kind of move it along. I'm, you know, donating my time for that.
Right.
But the, you know, it's just a matter of getting, getting a solid commitment that the town wants this. Is what we're after.
With the type of money that you're looking for, you're probably going to have to get three bids on it, because it'll go through the procurement policy, so you'll have to Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, it's not why we're here tonight, so we'll move forward. Thank you.
And then as, what, Cricket, do you have anything?
No, this particular one.
As long as we're talking about skate space, we may want to sort of talk about the project that's been associated with it, and that would be the pump track, which again could be And that would be the pump track, which again could be or could not be done at the same time as these case space. And Tom, I don't know if you have something you want to expound on that.
Yeah, I just came here in case anybody needed any information.
Yeah, I I think it sounds like from the following the meeting that pump track upgrades. Not to shoot ourselves in the butt, but I think those are probably outside the scope of what's available. Funding. It was definitely something that started talking about our sister project to skate space upgrades. But I think the funding for that sounds like would be appropriate to be procured elsewhere. I think definitely the rec committee's priority is skate space. And another interesting add on that we had in mind is upgrades to the pump track.
We'll keep that on our consideration list.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
This is a sample track. Gives you an idea of kind of things you're looking for, basically. More pavement and it's very similar in as skate space.
It needs a, it needs a good base level to pave over a early section. And the beauty of that particular idea is that it gets the skate park, which is kind of homemade disasters on that skate skate space right now, kind of off the off the level area. And, you know, adds a adds another dimension to the the whole recreation area. And right, another, another thing we talked about is the, and we'll probably go ahead and do this before. Basically putting up some signage.
And then these contracts are all the raids throughout the country.
Yeah, I can say however much or however little anybody needs to hear. But the essence of the thing is the area that's over there was a low five volunteer built effort. It's very, has a high maintenance requirement. What we would be looking to put in its place would be a permanent low maintenance asphalt pump track that could be ridden by more than just bikes, scooters, skateboards, more kids, just more of a kind of a attention or just a hub for people to go. We're just.
It would be one area, one way to quote the junk factor of the area. There's a lot of homemade ramps right now. Just like plywood. You know, after just one, one winter, they splinter up to become kind of dangerous. And then for when the winter comes around, when we flood, we got to get those things off. They're heavy, they're, you know, they look like hell all over the place strewn around. Looks like a junkyard. If they have a nice clean pump track like that, it it just becomes a more attractive place.
Yeah, we got it. I I bet my son would love it too.
Literally the other day. So I'm aware of that being a major component of that. It's not a preference that's been fleshed out completely. It's an idea that could be.
Does that storm drain affect that? That one that comes down often the across the church?
Two inlet slot outlet that's right in the middle of the existing pump track. Not a storm drain, but an actual sewer.
There's a storm drain there that comes down towards it, feeds out into the high school there. And it's it's been, but does the water go that way now that that culvert? I turned it into the state to have them see if they can deal with that.
So you're talking a little bit.
Yeah, that feeds down back. The the kids used to have a trail that went down through there, but the.
Just dump a bank right there.
Right. And that, but that culvert came apart and it's now separated and that water's coming down. I don't know if it's running towards that.
Yeah, that's way.
It's just way below it. I wasn't sure if it's.
In the pump track area and sewer and that that would be a major consideration. And the scope of location scope, all of that of that.
Right.
Okay, so we have four suggestions on our list so far. Anybody else have a suggestion?
Just that truck, that's all. I mean, we're going to need more. You know, by the time we ordered it, it was the body self.
Okay.
We raised some pretty good money, so we're going to be short maybe four or five thousand.
Outfitting the new truck. That's the pickup.
Right.
That that was on the list.
Right.
Yeah.
But you said a couple of grand, but I think it'd be closer to four or five.
Okay.
I mean, we're going to dump everything we can into it, but.
Right.
The item I, I'm wearing a couple of hats here for. The item I was at the last like we're meeting about, which again is a unknown scope, unknown timing and unknown if it would necessarily even happen, but would be nice to maybe keep as a placeholder is is maybe some help to the credit landowners to improve it in the pump station or the the village near Robinson Drive. Again, don't even know if that's the direction that project's going to head, but if it does head in that direction, holding it as a placeholder or a little, even a tiny bit of ARPA funding would be super awesome.
Okay, it's on the list.
The library, painting and various repairs to the walls.
I already have that.
Yeah, you got that on the list.
I have some that were emailed in, so I do have one from, well, let's do this. I have one from Jeff Get Part, who says, I would urge the board to utilize ARPA funds to make further progress on energy and climate improvements to town assets. Of course, the biggest issue faced involved the Rochester High School and the town office. However, their linkage requires further analysis as to the direction we should go as a community, which clouds our current ability to make significant investments in either one of the buildings. My suggestion to the board are to consider the community needs identified and prioritized through the Rochester Area Climate Initiative, as well as the items identified by the Efficiency Investments Incorporated audit from October of 2021. Work in need of funding includes the Rochester Public Library, stop water penetration of exterior walls, electric vehicle charging station, mo- motion sensor activated lighting and security camera for the facility. The facility will be provided by Green Mountain Power. Town garage, air sealing, insulation and improvements to walkability and bike ability to increase non-motorized access to Rochester Village. I E, I would imagine that points towards sidewalks. We have a email from Terry Parkett who asks, please use some or all of the funds to repair our amazing library and Route 100 through town. So that would be a vote for our library improvements and sidewalk improvements. Kelly Kelly, I have number one, library building maintenance and repair issues, including painting the outside of the building, repair the rotted window sills, leak in roof flashing on the north side of the library. Number two, Brook Street paving from the bridge to the Clansmiths. The road is very broke up, especially from all the traffic that was diverted that way during the repair of Bethel Mountain Road. Put Brook Street in here.
We got additional paving projects there, the town office and cemetery. So we could put that in on that one.
We have a message from Rosie Ann Johnson, who says, I'm writing to request that funds be set aside for the dire repairs of our beautiful library. Jeanette could provide a list. She also sent a second email saying that she was specifically looking for painting, window sill repair, fixing the leak in the roof and repairing the chimney. And she did also provide photographs for us to have on file. And I think that is it. Julie Smith has requested that we want a large community bulletin board to be mounted across from the skip mark or the triangle area of the post office for her to post meetings and town information for people to see. Or anybody to use. Community bulletin board.
Martha, you're on mute.
Julie, just one quick question. When you're seeing a community bulletin board, are you talking about something that's like that you can post posters on that's that's, you know, non-electronic? Are you thinking it's something that, I mean, I heard, I've heard of community bulletin boards that you put electronic messages on. That's not what you're thinking of, right? Or or not?
No.
Okay.
When taxes are due.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Like a court board.
I don't know, just something, something large enough that when you're driving through town, you can see, oh, taxes are due this week or there's going to be a community event.
I was going to ask you if that would be something like, for example, I'm in charge of Fourth of July Parade and Harvest Fair and things like that. You could put a poster for an event up on it as well, right? But you probably have, is it something we should ask permission from you to put a poster there if this does happen?
Or it'll be, it'll be managed. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
A couple of other suggestions that have come our way. Of course, the town office here has got a retaining wall problem that has been going on for years and the restoration, repair, renovation of that retaining wall. We are also talking about looking at the trees that are on the park. And some of the trees may be outgrowing their lifespan for the space of the park. So doing an analysis of the trees on the park and possibly doing some tree removal on the park.
And stump removal. That's another one.
Biggest part.
Yeah.
And we have also been requested to put in doggy poop bag stations around the areas where people walk their dogs. The park, the trail down around the ball fields, around the schools. There's been certain Riverside Park, there's been places identified as in need of providing services to people that are walking their dogs. So that's what we have so far. Still open for suggestions.
I have one fairly small thing. Actually, I I talked to Jeanette, our librarian, and she was talking about how bikers use the locking their brakes on the railing against that. And they're not usually not even going in the library. They're hanging out in the park or whatever. And then the bikes are sort of on the inside. So it's sort of an impediment to the handicap people. And so she was requesting having a bike rack somewhere around the park, some central location. So hopefully that can be a consideration.
On the park. Okay. Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, ma'am. Everybody's moving.
You're here. Okay, then we have heard all of the suggestions. I moved to adjourn the meeting. We will be taking all of this in consideration as soon as we possibly can. And to those that have suggestions and have preparations, we would definitely be getting back to you. I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Hi. Thank you so much for coming this evening. Good suggestions.